So again, this is Mayor Andy Moore, and I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time. Um, Madam Clerk, I'd like to start with a roll call. And then afterwards, I would like to ask Councilman Scott if he would lead us in a moment of prayer.
Yes, sir. Mayor Proton Dunn?
Present.
Councilman Lee?
Here.
Councilman Stevens?
Here.
Councilman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Barber?
Here.
Councilman Wood?
Present.
Councilman Regal?
Present.
Okay, Mayor, everyone's present.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Scott, do you mind leading us in a, uh, moment of prayer, please?
Certainly. Uh, this is Councilman Scott. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this night, Lord, and this beautiful weather that you provided us. We just pray that you continue to provide us with direction, guidance, as we make decisions on behalf of our community that we're so proud of. Just pray, Lord, that you'll bless our nation, Lord, during this pandemic that we're going through, and keep us all to not become complacent to the real facts, Lord, and help us to focus on the truth, Lord, and not the fake things that are being published. We just pray, Lord, that you'll be with us in this time. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Councilman Scott.
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and, um, continue with budget discussions. Um, gentlemen, I know there were a couple of specific topics that we did want to try to cover tonight. However, you know, obviously, the budget is not approved yet, so any topic is game. So if there's anything that you would like to discuss, we certainly can discuss that tonight. Um, our city manager, Scott, is not with us tonight. He is away at a family funeral, so I'm gonna keep him and his family in our prayers also this evening. Um, but we'll go ahead and get started. I will ask that, since we are on conference call, that you try to keep your lines muted if possible if you're not speaking. Um, and then before you start speaking, if you'll identify yourself, that'll just make it easier on the clerk as well. So I do know that a couple of things that we wanted to discuss tonight was actual salary increases, uh, particularly in the area of the police department. And then also possibly discuss the water plant. Uh, those are two topics that I am aware of. Um, any other topics that anyone knows that they would like to discuss at this time? Okay. All right, hearing none, why don't we move on, um, to the topic of the salaries? And we can just start a discussion amongst the council members? Who wants to start it off?
This is, uh, Councilman John Dunn. Uh, I know, since we're sitting here in a moment of silence, apparently, I'll go ahead and get this started. Um, I had compiled some numbers and emailed out to, um, the council to look at. And the police chief provided some more numbers today also. But my, one of my biggest concerns about this is the, uh, current position that our uncertainty is in our economic outlook. Uh, currently, for this tax, for this fiscal year coming up, um, we were able to roll forward last year's shortfall to help cover this. But one of the concerns that I have is the ongoing expense of this. Obviously, once you sort of raise in place and move the base salary schedule, that's permanent. Uh, and I truly believe the police department is deserving of all the raises they have or that are proposed. However, I just don't think this is the best time to implement this right now.
Okay, all right. Any other thoughts, comments on this?
Well, I, I would like to see us do something, um, currently, if possible. I don't know if, I think we may have, I think we may have overshot what we were looking at to begin with, uh, in light of the latest information from John Keith, who provided information to Powell, um, today. Uh, I'm not against doing something immediately. I just don't know that we could do fifteen percent right now. Or round about fifteen. I don't know exactly the number. Shannon, this is Councilman Wood. Sorry.
Uh, Mayor, this is Councilman Barber. Um, I would say that, uh, I think we had a pretty good discussion, uh, last time related to, uh, this topic. Um, I think, uh, what was asked for appears to be fair and justified. I think the numbers that we have seen from, um, the, uh, that the, uh, uh, that the chief has put forth demonstrates that we fall in line, not behind the times, but in line with what would be competitive in salaries per people. Um, so, uh, my, uh, just my view is that I'm satisfied with where we are.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Barber.
Uh, this is Councilman Lee speaking. Uh, I'm kinda mainly in agreement, um, with, um, Councilman Barber, pretty much the way he just said. Um, you know, already, you know, we're, we're down six, seven police officers. Um, you know, we, we, we gotta get competitive to, to get some, you know, new police officer in. And then, you know, on the back end, you know, some of the veteran police officers or whatever, you know, at some point, you know, we're gonna have to kinda, you know, be looking at, you know, um, ready to do a little something for them because this really doesn't address them. So, I mean, this is safety. This is something that's very, very, very important. And, um, as you look across the nation now, what's going on, and, you know, um, this is the police department, you know, it, it, it has to be, you know, just one of the departments, you know, dealing with safety, dealing with residents, dealing with, you know, everything that's going on, you know, that, that, you know, we really, really need to do what we gotta do to, um, you know, to take care of, you know, the police department. That's just my own personal take.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Lee.
This, this is, uh, David Stevens. Go ahead.
No, you're fine, David. Go ahead.
Um, this is Councilman David Stevens. Um, I'm kind of in agreement with, uh, John and Roger here. Um, after getting the back, the, the salaries of the other police departments, I agree that we do, we do need to compensate them, but I don't think we need a fifteen percent raise to put them at the very top of the food chain. Um, everybody's getting a two and a half percent raise already. Um, and yes, the police department does a fantastic job, and I thank them for what they do, but, and at the same time, when you give everybody two and a half percent or two percent, and then you give the police department fifteen, I think that the other, uh, that's really a, come to think about it, not a good look for our other employees. Um, I do agree that, that their, um, jobs are a little bit more hazardous, I get that. Um, but I believe that fifteen percent off the bat, when we're not really, you know, we're not in the lower tier, but we're not at the bottom, and we necess, don't necessarily have to compete with, uh, Clayton and Nightdale because we're not in their, that's not in our ballpark. I mean, they're close by, but I think we could do, maybe do a little better and with, I mean, do not as much as fifteen percent. Maybe give them five percent. Um, and then look at it next year because, as John said, we really don't know how much money we're gonna have. But, and that we didn't have this year, this upcoming year because of all these closings, and I don't even know who's gonna come back. Um, but we, I think it's gonna be a, I think it was three hundred and some thousand dollars that we thought, but that's gonna be far more than that on our tax base, um, the longer this keeps going. Every time I go somewhere, I went to a restaurant the other night, and there was one couple in there, you know, but everybody had to be six feet apart. But one busy, one a lot of people go to here, and they're not even going yet still. So that's just my opinion. I think fifteen percent's kinda hefty for, for them, and then not treating our other employees the same because it'll happen again next, next year, then every, you know, it's a never-ending battle. It is in business, in my business, um, in anybody's business. But I think maybe we should shoot for five for them and maybe two for everybody else if we, if we gotta get them in sort, in line with comparable to what different towns in our area have. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Stevens. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Councilman Scott.
Uh, uh, I just wanna thank everybody for, uh, taking the time to come together tonight and discuss the topics for our budget. Um, hopefully, we can get this stuff wrapped up. Um, I think, uh, Mike Scott put it well in our last meeting that if we were going to change this, we should change it with the recommendations, or it wasn't gonna fix the problem. And then after talking with Councilman Dunn, I understand his concerns with the, with the numbers. And, um, I think before we make a decision, we need to validate, you know, and make sure that we're on the same page. But what I wanna reflect is, I just want it to be fair and equal for all employees. Um, I do have, uh, you know, concerns that, you know, this could be seen as unfair, but we've been dealing with this problem for many years with our police officers' pay. And, uh, as one other councilman pointed out, it, it reflects not only in the lower rank officers, it's, it's the whole department, including the police chief and his administrative staff, the detective divisions, and all those. I say all that to say, um, perhaps an idea to make this a little bit more transparent and a little more fair, it'd be as fair as possible, we could adjust the, um, if we agreed to give the two and a half percent, as we discussed in our last session at the manager's discretion, that in fact, that that would not reflect on those that were compensated for the already-approved police salary increase. Um, perhaps that would make it a little easier. But, um, I, I just, uh, I wish we had this date a little earlier because we've had several months. And as Councilman Barber shared, um, you know, at one of our sessions, we've kicked this can down the road for a while. And I do understand that, um, the, uh, the fear of the, the money and not knowing where the revenue's gonna be there. But I just gotta say that, you know, if you look at what's going on in our nation, our police, um, they keep our city safe. They do a fantastic job. I'm proud of them. I know everybody's not perfect, but overall, we have a very strong department. And hopefully, you know, if we're paying a little bit more than some of these other towns, that gives us a better choice of good officers that will come and, and develop tenure and stay with our department. Because one of the fears that I have is us not fixing this problem, is the money that we're losing that we don't know. When you train an officer up, you equip them, and then they resign to go to another agency. That's very expensive, from uniforms, equipment, training time. You know, they have mentorships they have to do before they're actually on the road. And, um, I certainly would, um, hope that, uh, our police chief may have more information on that. But I think that's something we gotta analyze in making this decision. Um, Mayor, I, I'd ask you to, um, call on the police chief, and if he could share with us what it costs whenever an officer leaves because that training program and the time, the uniforms and all that, I know that that has a significant impact on the overall financial picture as we're talking about.
Well, I, I kinda think, this is, this is Councilman Wood. I want you to put something in perspective. Again, I, I, I agree with Travis, I agree with, with Maul and you, and all of us believe that the, you know, policemen and the police officers are, you know, we've got to be competitive. There's no doubt. But you realize that we're only a thousand dollars less than what a Raleigh Police Department officer would start with four years' experience? And Raleigh has over a billion-dollar budget. We are higher than what they start, if, if this goes through, we're higher than what they start by four thousand dollars roughly. And then with BLT, it's forty-two, three, two years' experience, it's forty-four, we're still higher even with ten years. We don't have that type of budget to compensate that. Um, again, I, I think we need to do something. I just think that the roughly fifteen percent, in light of the latest information we, we have obtained, is a little, is a stretch, in my opinion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Any, any other comments from council at this time?
Yes, this is Councilman Dunn again. I'd like to just thank everybody for their input tonight. It is a very serious and worthwhile topic, and I think everybody agrees that police is, public safety's number one on everybody's minds, especially now with so much uncertainty of what's going on. And sometimes when people get in a crisis, they react differ, diff, difficulty. And we depend on the police department to protect us. But at the same time, we did have a salary study done last year. It came back, all town employees were adjusted accordingly. And apparently, based on that, our police department was, uh, not, maybe not rated as high as they should have, not rated as high, but not compensated as much as they should have been during that study. And I really believe if you go to fifteen percent pay, pay raise on this, you're gonna see other departments start thinking, well, was our salary study part of the threat? The, the guy that works in the snow and rain and sleet, how happy is he, or how disgruntled is he gonna be? And what it may do for morale. Now, I think they, if we could pay every employee a hundred thousand dollars, because they are all critical to the town, I think we should, but we can't. We have a small budget. Our income is fluctuating right now with a lot of uncertainty. And I just think doing this big a increase, even if you deducted off their two and a half percent, that's still gonna be a twelve and a half percent increase for them. Uh, and I think it's gonna cause some problems with other employees. That's just my two cents on that. I, I just, I'm not in favor of going the full amount. If somebody has another number, I'm, I might be okay with it, but I'm just not in favor of that full amount.
Thank you, Councilman Dunn. And just for clarification, uh, on one of your statements about the salary study. Now, the salary study, just for clarification, did not recommend, uh, what, what has been proposed. Um, in fact, it, it basically said the police department was in line, right? So I think what you were saying is, is that maybe, maybe some disagree with that salary study. But the salary study that we paid for, um, actually stated that the, the police department was in line.
Right. So I think some positions shuffled some, but for the most part, we were in line. In most, all of our departments, there were slight modifications to our collect, correctly across for some, some job titles.
Yep. Yep, okay.
I have a question. Uh, Chief Powell, are you here?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Uh, how many officers did we lose since the salary survey was provided to us?
Four.
Four? Okay, just, thank you, sir. That's Councilman Barber.
Okay, Chief Powell. Chief Powell, David Stevens.
Yes, sir.
How many, how many are short now?
Six. I was seven until we, I was, uh, seven until we lost the housing authority position, not with back to six.
Okay, how many you got in training at JCC or under contract or what, whatever?
Two, and they actually, uh, I think finished up yesterday, and they both graduated. So hopefully, if everything goes well, and we can get their paperwork through, uh, training and standards, uh, they'll be certified.
So that means you're, then you'll be four short, correct?
Be four short, yes.
Okay. Thank you for what you do, and this is not anything against you or the department. I just think in these uncertain times, that, that fifteen percent raise, I think all of us would jump at that, no doubt. And I understand the, the, um, circumstances in which they work. And, but I just believe in these uncertain times and having a chance to really reflect on it, that maybe we do need to pay our police a little bit more. But at these times, I just think that, uh, we could do, you, if we're giving a two and a half percent, well, maybe we get another two and a half and make it five for the police department, you know, and give them a little boost and give you a little help, maybe recruiting. Um, again, that's my opinion, and I'm just throwing that out there for y'all to talk about. Thank you. Thank you for your, your work, Keith.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Stevens. Um, Chief Powell, while, while we got you, um, I think Councilman Scott had a question, if you know. I'm not exactly sure if you know this number, but if you know approximately estimate of cost it would, it would, uh, it costs us when we train an employee, I guess, and then, and then they leave. I'm not exactly sure how we put a number on that because you don't know how long they're gonna be here and so forth. But I guess if you've got any comments towards that.
Well, I kinda got it broke down a little. Um, right off the bat, when we start hiring a new police officer, it usually takes about a hundred man-hours of conducting and arranging, application or interviews, reviews, interviews, background checks, conditional officers, officers, drug screens, physicals, the fitness, uh, all the stuff that goes along with getting them in here, file on certification, and then training, paperwork, training and standards. Um, and then you go on for uniforms and equipment, which is another additional twenty-five hundred dollars just to get them started with uniforms. Um, then you've got about fifteen hundred hours invested in the employee with the training and all the other stuff that goes on. I mean, you're, you're looking at pretty close to, if you put it in monetary value, maybe forty, fifty thousand dollars in an employee by the time you get through training, and he's able to do the job on his own.
Okay.
And this takes place for each officer that we train.
Gotcha. Councilman Scott, was that, does that answer your question or give you an idea? That, what you were?
Yes, it does, Mayor. Thank you. This is Travis Scott. Um, wow, that really puts it in perspective. Um, so the money that we're talking about on the table that's in the current budget, to increase their salary, we'd be saving money if we could keep and retain officers. Um, I, like I say, I, it's, uh, it's something that's got to be dealt with. And, um, I, I don't know, um, exactly the fifteen percent. Is that in fact, real, real data, what, what they're gonna be seeing? That's a fifteen percent of the entry salary. Um, and we're talking about the, um, the lack of it changing over the years. Uh, it, it is boggling to know that the pay study didn't catch that data. And we were told later that the police officers', um, pay, it was, it was inaccurate. I don't know what happened there. I wish Mike was here to address that, but maybe Tim Carrigan could. I'm sorry.
Tim, are you?
This is Tim Carrigan, yeah. I'm off of mute now, I'm sorry. What was the question, Councilman Scott? I'm sorry. Um, when we done the pay study, the co, the salary study across the town, what was the conflict, we were told something that it wasn't accurate for the police department when this was brought forward to us? Um, and, and that's why back in June, I know actually it's been about six months ago when this first come up, we asked to pass it to the budget time. And, um, what was, what was the difference in what they recommended and what, um, staff recommended? They were talking about the day.
I don't know the exact dollar amount between what was, uh, recommended by staff at that time, but it, but the results of the study did not bring it up to what, uh, what the chief was looking for there. Uh, he felt that he was still going to be short at that time, uh, so he did still feel that he would be coming back with another proposal as he is now. But I do not know the exact dollar amount of what that request was. Keith might have that.
I don't have it, Tim.
Okay.
Not right at hand, I don't.
Was that fairly accurate, though? I mean, at the time, you felt like it was not going to get you to where you were going to be as competitive, and that's why we're bringing it up again?
Yes, sir. When this was all brought up, it was, you know, we lost all the employees to Nightdale, so that was the, the direction that I got, was to kinda see where we were at compared to them, and that's what this is based off of.
Uh, this is David Stevens again. Uh, Chief Powell, when those guys left for Nightdale, did they go to a same-ass position that they left here for?
No, sir. Uh, the, the, well, one didn't. He went, uh, one left as, from here as a sergeant and went back to the road as a patrol officer. Um, the rest went as patrol officers. And I think one went as an investigator.
So they pretty much all, all got a, uh, what's the word? I'm looking for it this time. It's left me, they got a promotion when they left. Is that what you're saying?
No, um, the majority of them, the one officer that left, the la, the recent one that left, he was a sergeant with us. And he went to Nightdale as a police officer. He took a demotion. But the majority of them left here and went as officers.
Well, this is Roger. So the current range, if I'm looking at this information correctly, for a sergeant, was forty-five, seven, twenty-four. But he, he, he actually left for less money. Right? He went back to a police officer.
No, sir. He went back in as a master police officer with his time and rank, and he, he started at fifty thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and got a five percent raise, um, after six months.
And what was he making when he left?
Uh, would have to pull that one's salary, but he was, he was not at forty-five thousand at the time.
He's got to be, because the starting salary, the minimum for a police sergeant is forty-five, seven, twenty-four.
Give me one second, and I'll let you look. Well, he left it.
That's what, that's the information he gave me, and the maximum was seventy thousand, eight, seventy-two.
Mayor, while he's looking that data up, I would ask the HR director if he could, I know it's confidential from employee to employer relationship, but could he share with the council some of the things that he's heard in exit interviews? Is pay really the reason that they're leaving? I think that's the, the question. I, I mean, I, I think we know the answer, but I'd like to hear his feedback on that.
Yes, Councilman Scott, that, that is correct. In each of the exit interviews, that was one of the reasons that was provided. I believe, I don't have the numbers, while, uh, while Chief Powell was looking that one individual up, he, he was, he did get a pay in, he got a, a position demotion, but he did get a pay increase to, to leave our agency and go to Nightdale.
But is it not, isn't it true that a previous police officer here is now the cap or the chief of police in Nightdale?
That I'm not certain. I, I had heard that, but I'm not certain of that. Chief Powell might be able to answer.
Um, yes, sir, he is. And that officer, that off, that officer, when he left, was making about forty-seven, almost forty-seven thousand.
And, and what, and what role?
As a sergeant.
So he had an opportunity to make seventy thousand dollars a year. And he chose to leave.
Well, that, that, that's.
For twenty-five hundred dollars. I, I mean, I, I, I'm still not doing, I still don't understand that. And maybe I'm, because maybe I'm not in the, maybe I'm not in the police force or police career model, but.
But for him to be, for him to reach seventy thousand dollars, Councilman Wood, there would have to be a lot of, uh, cost of livings and a lot of pay raises to get to that salary.
Right. So, so gentlemen, this, this.
Right. So- so gentlemen, this- this right here is an example of kinda what I have been saying is, we don't need to be comparing ourselves to Nightdale anyway. I understand that we may have lost some- some officers to Nightdale, but we are not Nightdale, gentlemen. Nightdale is, has a population of, what, about seventeen, eighteen thousand. Their- their property tax base is much larger than ours. And what this tells me is if we have officers that can leave and go to another department, obviously, they can afford that, right? And- and it just goes even more so to prove that we don't need to be comparing ourselves to a Nightdale. I know that's the one that we- we, uh, has been thrown out and- and because we've lost several officers to Nightdale, like, yes, is the reason why that was our number one. But in my opinion, and I've stated this all along, just my opinion, don't think we need to be really comparing ourselves to- to a Nightdale. You know, uh, you know, to me, you compare yourselves to towns the size of ours. Um, Elon, eleven thousand, eight hundred people, Spring Lake, twelve thousand people, Amaban, fifteen thousand people. Somewhere, and I have no idea what these numbers are, uh, Henderson, fourteen, seven, Roanoke Rapids, you know, those are the ones that we, in my opinion, if you wanna compare apples to apples, you do so. Um, I understand that we're losing them to Nightdale, but I just- I just, and that's just my personal opinion of- of even more of a reason why we shouldn't be. Um, just, that's just my fault, right? Whether we do anything, you know, whether we do anything or not, I- I just don't think Nightdale's who we need to be comparing ourselves to. Just my opinion.
Can- can I ask a question, David? This is, uh, Councilman Barber. My- my question is, um, uh, Chief Powell, approximately, how many, I don't know, you don't know the exact numbers, so I'm just, I- I mean, I realize you're not the expert at this, but I know you deal with a lot, so our question is, what is the- what is the approximate, uh, population in Smithville during the day? Not the people who live in the town, but the people that our police force has to manage, uh, uh, during the day in the town of Smithville?
I- I would say somewhere between thirty to forty thousand. Uh, some days it can be more than that, depending upon the time of the season.
So I- and I would say that I recognize that we have, according to the latest census I just saw today, Smithville has approximately thirteen thousand people, which is a great increase, by the way, is an increase from what we've had in the past, so we are growing and will continue to grow. I think exponentially, as we continue to add all these new houses, our population will continue to grow more rapidly. But, um, uh, so therefore, we're behind during the nighttime hours, we're behind the likes of, uh, Nightdale by approximately, uh, four to five thousand people. But during the daytime, when most of the people in Nightdale, if I was working in Raleigh, because it's a bedroom community and they don't really have a lot of outlet centers and stuff like that, like we do, uh, they are probably well below what we are in our capacity and we're three times as big as they are during the daytime. So I'm just saying, if we wanna do a comparison, apples to oranges, uh, the amount of workforce demand that we have to have for our police officers during the daytime is a lot more than even perhaps crazy during the daytime because of our, because of our municipalities, my, because we have the courthouse here, and so, uh, because of the outlet center, which is the- the largest revenue generating place in the- in the county. So, uh, clearly, we have a larger demand for police officers during the day than any of our near neighbors, including Nightdale. Uh, that's just, I mean, based upon this is, the- this is simple statistical numbers. Uh, yet we have a lower police force than some of these others do, because we can't maintain a- a staff, but that's just my opinion.
This is David Stevens. I understand what Councilman, uh, Barber's- is saying, but at the same tone, at the same time, those, uh, fifteen thousand extra people don't pay taxes in the town of Smithville. And that's where we got to understand that this is about, yes, we're supposed to look after all our employees, but we gotta look after the citizens' money and be good stewards at the same time. Um, I think that, I just think that that's a little bit of a powerful number, fifteen percent, for anybody. Heck, if I got a fifteen percent raise, I'd be gone too. But it's a never-ending battle. I have problems retaining people. That's the nature of the beast. Somebody starts paying more, then it's- it isn't, it's ongoing. And it's not retainment, because I have, it's the same everywhere. Um, people are gonna leave for two or three thousand dollars, a thousand. Um, I do want a great police force. I just think this is, this is just a little bit too much, especially in this- these times. And, um, I, like I say, I keep throwing that five percent out, would be a whole lot better and a better number for all the, um, other employees as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stevens.
Well, Mayor, I- I too, um, this is Travis, I reflect on, um, Councilman Stevens' comments about the workload and Councilman Barber as well. I think, um, you know, looking at it from a- from a perspective of putting yourself in their shoes, there's other things besides the pay that are factors and we've talked about them. For example, the- the fleet, uh, take home cars, which we've tried to implement, you know, we have a policy for that now, which, um, I know we're still working on that. Uh, and also, just the call volume, the workload, um, so, you know, I, you know, I- I hear everybody's concern and, you know, Smithville's the one that has the retention problem right now. And if we're paying a little more and things are going well, that- that would fix our problem. But I also understand that the cost of, uh, of the- the change, so I just, uh, I reflect back on what our manager said, either do it or don't do it. Um, you know, and I think they had put a lot of time in that research and I appreciate Councilman Dunn's bringing it up to, for discussion, uh, with his data. And, um, it was eye-opening, to be honest, so, but I don't know what the answer is. I just hope we make a- a wise decision. Um, I think we've already approved this, but at the same time, I guess, uh, you know, it's back up for discussion, so, um, I stand open. I don't know what else to say.
This is Roger. So, what the, how many linemen, are we competitive in the lineman division? I can tell you, and I've talked with Ted for multiple times on this, and his superintendent, we're not competitive there. So if we're trying to compete with everybody's job by pay, we're gonna be in trouble. I mean, so, I- I don't know. Ted, is Ted on the phone or not? Well, Tim, you make an answer. Do we lose, when we lose linemen, is it for pay?
Yes, sir, typically it is. Uh, typically, this is Tim Carrigan.
Okay, so, so next year, when we wanna be, yeah, so next year, when we wanna be competitive with the lineman and we give them fifteen percent, we'll do that too. And then, next thing you know, we'll have to be competitive with YMCA or whoever, try it. Give them fifteen percent. I mean, I mean, it's like Councilman Stevens says, it's an ongoing battle. And I don't disagree that, you know, we need to give them a raise, but fifteen percent or roughly, I don't know exactly the exact number, we're referring to around fifteen percent is- is the key. I would propose we do a five percent raise right now. That's what I would look at. And then if the two and a half comes through in September, that's seven and a half, we start from there. But that's what I would, that's what I would say. And that's just my, that's my fault. Uh, because it doesn't, it- it- it doesn't really, it just sets a precedent for other departments. And I think Councilman Stevens made something around about when he said that. Um, we just, and our budget is our budget and it is what it is. So, you lost two officers to the beat, correct? Uh, Chief Powell?
He might still be gathering that information. Uh, this is Tim. He might still be gathering that information. But, uh, yeah, certainly with the line, certainly with the lineman, I know Ted's not in on the call, but we- we have made an adjustment to try to get that more competitive. Uh, and- and also, one of, one of the reasons we see them leave is they'll go to a Duke or they'll- they'll go to a travel lineman. But we, uh, but certainly understand the, uh, concern about increasing in one department, not- not everywhere. But that is part of the reason there, that they go to a private entity sometimes as well.
Okay. Well, I understand that, but again, to David Stevens' comment, we're- we're, we report to the tax base.
Yes, sir.
And we gotta make sure we're good stewards of our tax dollars. And- and I'm not saying this isn't. I- I just think it, I would say five percent now and two and a half in September, if- if we deem it necessary, we can go from there. Now, that may not be agreeable for most, for anyone, but that's my feel on it. Thank you.
This is Council-
Thank you, Tim.
Sorry. Yes, sir.
Uh, this is Councilman Dunn again. Um, Andy made reference to comparing things, apples to apples. And as Dr. Barber brought out, our population sky- skyrockets dramatically during the day and nobody can argue that fact. And it does create extra workload. But at the same time, in just not trying to get anything started here, the firemen in Nightdale make the same thing as starting police officers. The firemen in Smithville start out at thirty-five, eight eighty-three. The fire respond just as more calls during the day because I ninety-five traffic is the least of. So just to pick Nightdale to benchmark, I don't think is where we need to go. And as I indicated, if this goes through as proposed, I think you can see a lot of upset employees that feel that they were wrong in this situation and I would have to agree with them. Again, I support the police, I support the fire department, I support our trash people, utility people. Every one of our town employees is vital to this town. But I just think this is not the way to go with it. So you're gonna have a lot of upset employees that are gonna start looking jobs other places purely for the money, because they feel they've been shafted by it.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, pray Tim. Any other comments?
I would probably say Nightdale, this is Roger, I would probably say Nightdale's daily traffic is- is equal, if not more, just due to Interstate four forty. And they do have shopping malls, they do have restaurants. Uh, Nightdale is a busy, I mean, if we're, again, if we're gonna prepare Nightdale, I don't have the data in front of me, how many, but Nightdale's a very busy town, especially out of I four forty, so, uh, I don't know if that's the, uh, not sure if that's really a good comparison. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on Council at this time?
Um, Andy, this is Travis. Um, I- I understand the concern. I would ask, we- we put the number of five percent on the table. I would be curious of where that puts us in, number-wise. I guess if we're basing off of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred salary from our book from page one fifty-seven, um, Tim, would that bring it up to, is that what number you would use to go off of to make that adjustment?
Yeah, off of that, if we had the, as proposed by, uh, Councilman Wood, the five percent and then the two and a half, that would bring it up to forty-two, five seventy. That would be the minimum for a PO one.
And the o- other number that we had already approved was forty-five, five forty, right?
Uh, yes, sir. So roughly three thousand dollars different. That is incorporating the two and a half.
And you, and the sergeant left for less than three thousand, correct? Male was roughly twenty-five to three thousand.
Yes, sir, that's what I recall.
Okay. We just gotta be careful not to set ourselves up for failure in the future with- with other departments and- and Councilman Dunn hit, said it perfectly, so.
So, uh, Council, and this is Travis, um, perhaps a resolution to this problem, I don't know, uh, I didn't hear a motion, but I heard Councilman Wood's concerned. Wha- what about this option, in efforts of trying to, uh, satisfy this situation and make it fair? What if instead of we said five percent now, we did a seven and a half percent? And if the other employees do get the raise, that- that these line changes would not be eligible for that? That's half where we started and that, I think that makes it fair, if we're gonna change it. Does that make sense, Mayor?
It- it does, Travis. The- the thing there, I guess you have to consider, I mean, it makes total sense to me, right? Um, I- I think what you're talking about is adjusting the salary schedule, uh, for those positions by seven and a half percent. Um, I guess the one difference there is, and, um, is that, you know, your adjustments that we make on an annual basis, ma- that may change, right? So they may, we may not give raises or we may give raises, right, depending on the budget. Um, but- but I- I think I hear you correctly, you would, you would, you're saying seven and a half percent. Um, and then, and that would be how the salary schedule changes, so it would be bumped up seven and a half percent. So that would be an ongoing fee for new- for new employees. Does that, does that, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on what you were saying.
Yes, Mayor, that undoes the motion and the- the ca- the council approved that, um, we're using the number fifteen percent. I didn't realize it. But pretty much what I'm saying is, instead of, um, set five and a half, five percent, do seven and a half now for all the minimum salaries on the list as we did at the fifteen percent. And- and those positions that receive the pay change now, because there's gonna be a few, not all, they would not be eligible for the two and a half if that passes and if that goes through with the manager's recommendation in the fall. As I know he's got it budgeted for those positions specifically. I think that could be pretty easy to do.
Well, maybe I was, maybe I didn't say it correctly. I- I was saying five now and if we get the two and a half, if we can give two and a half, we will review that then, depending on the- the dollar amount or the percentage, because we don't know how it's gonna look. And maybe I wasn't clear earlier, I'm sorry, Travis. Um, it could be one percent from points. I- I don't know. We don't know yet until we see where we stand. So doing that now at seven and a half, I don't know that's, I don't know that we could do that and not know where we're gonna be. Is that, is that?
I was just trying to find a compromise.
Yeah, no, I- I- I-
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was checking, real shame. Maybe I wasn't clear on it.
Yeah, I understand, I- I, I get it and just, just like-
And I apologize for not clarifying that.
Just for no purposes, right? Um, that would put our starting salary of a police officer from thirty-nine, six to forty-two, five seventy. That's where that would land. That's at, that's at the seven and a half percent. Right? So that's where that would line up, which then, down to Nightdale, based off of what the chief sent us, forty-five, seven fifty-one. The Raleigh starting police is forty-one, oh, six, eight, and then if they got their BLET, it's forty-two, three. Um, Garner's starting salary is twenty-four, six, ninety to thirty-eight thousand, um, for- for a BLET recruit. So, and then Police Officer One is forty-five. Dunn Police Department's thirty-eight thousand, but then it says advertised as thirty-six, six. I'm not exactly sure what that means. But, um, I'm not sure how they play with those numbers. If they advertise it at thirty-six, six, but then their up, their starting salary's thirty-eight, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure on that one. To me, that sounds like their salary schedule is thirty-six, six for a starting police officer, but don't know.
Uh, and I think, Mayor, for clarification, I think Raleigh should be, we should be looking at the BL- And I think, Mayor, for clarification, I think Raleigh should be, we should be looking at the BLET certification line because our officers have to have BLET before they're allowed to be on the road.
Right, right, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, with, uh, Dunn, with, with Dunn's, that is, they've not updated their paperwork yet on the, on the website. That's, um, I talked to their HR today, and it's, their starting salary's thirty-eight. They just haven't updated.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. All right, thank you, Chief, for that, that clarification. And then, I, I'm just running down these guys in case you didn't see this email because it came out late. Wilson Police Department is forty-one, oh-six-four. Rocky Mount's thirty-six, two-fifty-two, well, that's for a cadet. Police Officer One is thirty-eight, two-seventy-four. Um, Goldsboro is thirty-six, six-seventy-nine. Gulesboro is thir- is forty-one, eight-twenty-eight. Johnston County is forty-one thousand, six-twenty-one. Um, so, they kinda, you know, just kinda let you know wh- where we, where we stand. You know, it, should, should we do any of this, right? Um, kinda, kinda lets us know where we stand. Henderson, uh, it's roughly the same population as, maybe a little bit more than us, that's thirty-eight thousand, six-fifty-six. So, kinda gives you perspective of, should we do this at the seven and a half percent? Um, or, or i- or i- it's gonna put us in line, or even above, a lot of cities that are a lot larger than us. So, just, just kinda put things in perspective there. Which I, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with, I'm ju- I'm just, I'm just giving the numbers, right, guys? So, I'm just, I'm just giving the numbers. So, I know Councilman Scott's trying to work a compromise here, and I think we oughta listen.
Can I ask a question? This is, uh, David Stevens.
Right.
We're going to, we're gonna put the, uh, raises, what, in the fall, and that was because we were unsure of the economic climate, I guess?
The, the across-the-board, the across-the-board raise, we, we, we had asked to, to delay that until, like, September or so, yes, that's correct.
Just playing a little devil, devil's advocate, what makes the police department any be- different? We're holding off everybody for just the police. If you're gonna do one, I think we should do them all at the same time, whether it's in the fall or right now. Not that we don't need the police, don't get me wrong, but I'm just, you know.
Can I ask a question to the HR Director? This is Councilman Barber. Tim?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, so, are we, are we seeing, uh, a lot of job losses in other areas in our town besides the police? At the same percentage-wise as we are the police? Because that would be, that's a valid point. If we're losing it in other areas, then that's something that we also take into consideration when we also look at the, the police. If we're losing it in that same type of proportion, it just appears that we're having an unbalanced proportion of losing our police officers as compared to others, but you know the exit stuff. So, what would you say?
Well, we, we experience losses in, in every department, but it is definitely easier to fill in most of the other positions, entry positions, um, just as evidenced by, we, we currently have the six vacancies and, which will hopefully come to four. Uh, we, we've had that amount of vacancies for, for a couple of years now. Does that answer your question?
Do we have vacancies in other departments, or for particulars today?
We, we don't have the discrepancy in the other departments. Uh, but anytime to address the electric lineman, if we lose an electric lineman, that is very difficult to fill.
Uh, I understand. Matter of fact, I think it was last year that we had to make an adjustment to an offering salary to, because of that. So, we've already made an adjustment to the lineman when we tried to hire somebody because we could not offer, we could not find anybody who wanted to take it at that rate. We had to increase our baseline on that one so that we could hire more, is that not correct?
Yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
So, my point is, we have done this before in the other areas. It was not in mass because we didn't have a mass number of people needing to be hired, but we have done this before to other areas when we see that there's a need that we need to up our salaries to be able to be competitive. We've done that with the linemen before because we could not find somebody who could take the position unless they offered them more money. So, we did, and they took the job. So, um, I'm just saying, we have done that before in the past. Um, and let me say that, so-
Yeah, that, that-
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Councilor, sorry, I'm gonna cut out.
That's okay, I was just gonna say that, um, um, although I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, doing what we already committed to do, um, I'm, I'm willing to agree with a compromise to give them something that makes them competitive. And, uh, the suggestion that, uh, Travis made, it, that, that makes them competitive. I'm not sure it puts it where I want them to be, but I think it does make them competitive. So, uh, you know, I would be, uh, in support of the, the, the view that Travis had, even though it's not where I wanna be, but I think it would appease, um, it would, it would allow us to keep the ones that we have without them leaving.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Barber. Any other thoughts, comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I'm gonna, if it's okay if I add just a minute, this is Chief Powell. Um, I, when we did this, this was just a recommendation, trying to do what we thought was best for the agency, but it's, you know, we're still here as a town employees, and, and we want what's best for the town and for everyone. And, uh, um, with Councilman Wood's, uh, proposal a while ago, with that five percent, just for some clarification, would that be across the board for everyone in the police department? If that's the way it went?
Uh, no, we're talking about five percent for those that are, we're in question now.
Oh, okay. I, I just wanted to clarify, that, that was all. Thanks, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Chief. And I think, uh, Councilman Scott, is that how you would recommend it as well? I, I, just for clarification, on, on your position.
You know, um, I, I'm open for discussion, Mayor. I, I think to be fair and transparent, it should be across the board, but I thought initially that was the concern from talking with some of the commissioners, that, uh, that it was, was gonna be across the board, and then we found out that wasn't the case. And now we're renegotiating it this at the minimum level, so I, I don't know.
Well, the question was made in the budget session to affect the employees that are not at the, where we thought was competitive. So, I proposed a five percent to get to that point. I didn't think it'd be across the board.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if that one, you know, am I right in saying that, Mayor?
Well, I was, I was, I was going with, I was going, yeah, defer to Tim. It, yeah, so, Tim, do you mind letting us know? I think, I think that is correct, but I'd rather hear it from you guys directly.
Was that for me, Andy, I'm sorry?
Uh, yeah, Tim, so, I, did you, did you hear the question, I guess, or, or understand what the question is?
No, no, could I get clarity for that?
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, that's okay. So, I think what the question is, is, or, I guess, a little bit necessarily a question, but in, in one of our previous budget sessions, when we discussed this, it was basically raising those minimum levels for certain positions, right? It would not be a cross-the-board raise for all police, police officers. It would be raising it to the minimum, and then, should an officer already be at that minimum, they would not see that, that increase, whatever that percentage increase is. Is that how we did it?
Yeah, going back earlier, and, uh, Chief Powell can correct if wrong, but I believe his original request was to raise, uh, the minimum and, uh, have an adjustment across the board for the entire PD. Then that, uh, got, that was renegotiated to come down to mostly patrol, PO-one, two, and MPO. Uh, and so that is what this number is now based off of with the forty-five, five-forty, uh, with the PO-one there. That, that's where we got to, that roughly fifteen percent. Uh, so now, it is not matching his original request, but it is what we've been discussing through most of the budget session. Yes, sir.
Chief Powell.
Yes, sir.
This is John Dunn, how are you doing?
Good, sir.
Just for a little clarity, I think your original request was for fifteen percent through the entire range, but because people weren't at the minimum in the upper ranges, it wasn't going to affect them, is that correct?
That is correct. I was just asking for some clarification.
It was, your actual proposal was for fifteen percent for everybody, but it wasn't going to affect everybody. It was only gonna affect the lower-paid people.
When we did the first proposal, it was a fifteen percent across the board. Um, and then when that, we, we re, we redid it and just, uh, raised the minimum, and anybody above the minimum would, would not be affected.
Okay. So, since our-
And Mayor, just for the record, this is-
Um, not sure, John, if, I think I heard you speaking as well as Travis, um-
Yeah, I started, but then I couldn't hear anything after that when Travis started talking. I didn't know if he said anything or not, but he stopped.
I, I do have some comments, John, I didn't wanna interrupt you, I, I, I heard, sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. What, um, Chief Powell, since our discussion about this, I guess, two weeks ago, uh, what, what feedback have you had from upper-level personnel in your department and the patrol personnel? If any, if you can say.
Patrol guys were excited, um, the older guys that had been here for a while were somewhat upset because they just felt like they were being left out once again. That, that's pretty much been about the consensus, but they were, you know.
So, with your senior personnel, that we have had many of those guys for a long time. I mean, we don't want to lose those people either. So, I, I think by raising the salary, it's gonna cause a problem, no matter how you look at it. Uh, and I hate to say that, but now the older staff, the more experienced staff, is unsatisfied with their current position. Uh, and that's unfortunate. That's it. Like I say, with the raise that big, I know the younger guys with less experience are excited, and they're well-deserving all the money. I just think such a big increase can cause problems with personnel all throughout the town. And I know there's more to a job than just pay. There's other benefits that count. Uh, the take-home car program, unfortunately, a lot of our officers don't live in Smithfield and don't participate in that. Um, the health insurance, most all towns offer that, but, you know, just recently, we made an upgrade to our health insurance. I believe that cost the town around fifty-some thousand dollars to help all the employees out. Uh, again, I'm, I just think that's a big number. Even the, the seven and a half percent, I think they're still gonna upset your, your dedicated staff that's been with us for years and caused a lot of disgruntled acts.
Mayor, this is Travis. John, are you finished?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, um, so, um, the one, one comment I'd like to make is, again, going back to fairness for all employees, and, um, I understand the concern that was probably expressed to the police chief, and, um, that is concerning to me. Um, in effort to make a compromise so we can move off this topic, I, I'd like to put a motion on the floor. Mayor, um, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we do five percent, um, within the police department, and, uh, that would affect all of them, that takes us way down from where we were. And two and a half percent with the manager's discretion for other employees, as we have discussed, um, that'll be based on merit, um, coming up in September. I, I'll let that motion stand, Mayor.
Second, David Stevens.
Third, Councilman Ray.
So, I got a motion, second and a third. So, just, just for clarification, um, Councilman Scott, is that a five percent across the board for all police officers? Or for-
Our police officer.
The one that we just said.
Mayor, yes, I will clarify that.
Okay.
I think it should be five percent aboard for all people that work at the police department, here's why. Because when it go and gets tough, regardless of their rank, they're on the street answering calls. And I know it's a heavy workload, and I feel that they are deserving of that as well. And, um, I've talked with other council, and I think they feel equal. Um, so, I feel like that's a good compromise, it's, it's undone where we, where we were, but I think it will, uh, have a, 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 a impact.
Okay.
And we said that five percent would change those, yeah, go ahead.
No, just, I was, just one more clarification there, um, just for, for the clerk. And then you mentioned the two and a half percent for other employees at the manager's discretion. So, does that two and a half percent, would that include these police officers, should they get this raise?
I feel, Mayor, that it, it should, um, but I think that needs to be at the manager's discretion. You know, as we've all shared, the concerns with the numbers coming forward.
Okay, gotcha. So, okay, all right.
Yeah, five percent now, two and a half percent at, at manager's discretion, I would, I would think.
Okay, so, I guess what, just so we're clear, right? I just wanna make sure, the two and a half percent that we had talked about earlier was across-the-board raise for everybody, right? And, and the manager, what, what we gave him previously was the discretion to do so at a time that he felt comfortable, but at least not until September. I think what I'm hearing you say is now, is now that, now the, now the manager can have, can decide on his own whether he would like to also give that two and a half percent at whatever time is decided to the police department or not give it to them, is that correct?
I, I would defer to him, HR, and the police chief, but I think that's fair, yes.
Okay, well, I think we have, I think we just have to be clear on that, right?
I agree.
Because that, he gives it, you know, because we don't want any, we don't want any, if this is the way we go, we don't want someone coming back, who may not get that two and a half percent because of, you know, based off of merit or whatever. And then they complain, and Chief says, no, I, I had the discretion not to give that to the police department as well. You know, or, you know, or certain individuals within the police department, you know, so.
Well, I think discretion and fairness, discretion means if we can afford it. Fairness would be if they've earned it in the merit performance evaluation. So, if the manager sees it fit that, um, he's gonna offer raises, I would hope it would be across the board. In other words, at a merit per- percent based off performance. And also, Mayor, I'd like to just make a, make a, a note to the record that our prior meeting, we had discussed this, and we're changing that, so I'd ask that that be amended, since the discussions come up. And I also wanna make a statement that, to the media that may be listening, that the, um, the police officer change was based off, uh, encumbered money from last cycle because of the vacancies. We had about a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars that was unspent in that line item, so, um, I just wanna make sure that, that they, they understand that.
Right, right. And so, um, so now what I'm hearing is, is, again, I wanna make sure we're clear, right? Um, you wanna change the two and a half percent across-the-board raise for everyone to change that to a two and a half percent merit across, for all, for all employees? Is that, is that a fair statement? That way, is that the discretion by the manager of the department heads?
Yes, because we did discuss the cost of living versus that, um, prior, and, and it's up to the council, um, but I think there is value in merit, and good employees will be compensated. Um, but, Mayor, I'm open for discussion, I can remove that from the motion if that's confusing, and we can visit that in a few minutes.
I just wanna make sure, we're, we're, so everybody's clear on that motion, right? And I, so, just for the entire group. And I, so just for the entire group. Go ahead, Councilman Wood.
Yeah, this is Roger. So what you're telling me is Travis, in your motion, in September, you want it to be merit raised, correct? As in performance based. Is that what you're saying?
And historically- Yes, Councilman Wood, historically, that's what the town has done to award our employees, um, would be off of merit performance. Uh, maybe Tim could clarify if this is going to work, if he can enforce this. Um, I know Mike's not here. But, uh, I didn't, I was trying to be clear. I wasn't trying to be unclear. Sorry.
Well, no, 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 I, I, I just wanted to make sure because at our last meeting, we'd said two and a half percent. And basically, that was, that would, it wasn't really a merit is the way I understood it, right? And, and you are correct. And, and I, I actually favor more merit increases because I think we should be giving our employees raises based off of merit and the job that they do. Um, but it was my understanding that what is in the budget is a two and a half, what is in the current proposed budget is a two and a half percent, basically, salary adjustment, if you want to call it. So we can certainly do that. We can certainly do, give five percent, as you said, to the police department and then a two and a half percent merit increase in September to all employees. That's definitely doable.
I, I can add clarity to that. I believe that was asked. Uh, this is Tim. The two and a half was across the board, that's correct, and it was for all employees. Uh, I believe what I heard before was, uh, with the police department increasing five percent and then having an additional two and a half may would be included in that. But the two and a half across the board as previously proposed, that would be only if our taxes came back, if our revenues came back to allow it. So the two and a half was proposed tentatively for no earlier than September and that was only if it was allowed. So, uh, if we wanted to switch that to merit, we can, it was asked if we could do that, we, we certainly can. Uh, we should be doing evaluations with or without, uh, that dollar amount. But if we, if we take that away or separate that from the other employees, I, I think that that would be quite difficult. Uh, I definitely want to advocate for all of the employees to have an opportunity for that two and a half if it were across the board or merit based. And if it were merit based, we already have the dollar amount budgeted in there so that it could be a two and a half percent average.
Right, and I, and I don't, I don't think anyone's asking to take any, take that amount away from the employees, Tim, so, yeah, you're, you're correct.
Thank you.
Go, go ahead, Councilman Wood.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mayor. And so in your motion, Travis, you're saying five percent now across the board for the police department and additional two and a half if they, if their, you know, job is, job performance is successful performance or whatever, except for.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, sir.
So for the ones that are currently not, hold on one second, please. So, and, so I, I understand, so for the five percent across the board, what if we have an officer that is not performing well currently? He's going to get a raise regardless.
Okay, so I can clarify that, Roger. Thank you for pointing it out. I guess the five percent would be, um, across all pay grades in the police department, um, which would be a lot cheaper than where we were. And that would not be based off performance. That's just trying to fix the, the bleed, so to speak, of what we're talking about, the problem in the police department. And then the two and a half would be based off merit for all employees. Mayor, Mayor, I'm going to amend my motion. I, I want to, uh, let, let's make this clear for the clerk. I would like to amend my motion that five percent for the police department will be at the two and a half in a few minutes. I will remove that from this motion.
Okay, all right. So the motion is strictly for five percent across the board in the police department. Um, so Travis, I do have one, one more clarification on that. When you say across the board, because the example you used was people on the street. So we have other people in the police department, administrative staff, maybe someone answering the phones or whatever. Does that include them or just police officers?
I don't think that those positions were in our original proposal. I, I would make that clear too. Uh-
Okay.
That, that would be sworn officers, Mayor.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
I'd love to hear the police chief's feedback on that.
Travis, this is John. How are you doing? Uh, just little clarification. So when you say five percent across the board for all sworn officers, that means no matter if they're at the minimum now, it's just me, where they are now, no matter if it's at the midpoint, they get a five percent increase? Or is that for starting positions?
Well, I, John, I, I think it's fair that it, it, it's everyone, um, you know, because when, when the-
Well, that would have solved the problem of the upper people being disgruntled now.
Exactly.
I mean, that would fix that. But I just want a little clarification.
And the reason I say it that way is, um, when the go and gets tough, those guys are on the street answering calls too. I know the police chief even answers calls when they get busy. I was just trying to find a, a resolution. I'll be glad to revoke my motion and we can figure it out other ways. I just, I'd love for us to-
Yep, well, I mean, I think everybody has a lot of good points here and, because we could go round and round forever about it. The only concern I have is, um, when we talked about the, the number the other day, the cost in the budget of a hundred and seventy-four, first of all, I made a mistake in that. That did include all benefits and retirement, uh, additional social security, et cetera. So I misspoke on that last week. I just want to clarify that while I'm going. Um, but that number only affected the lower people. I think when you put it into effect, the sergeants, lieutenants, captains and police chief, that number's actually going to get bigger than what we're, we think it's going to be. I know we've reduced it from fifteen to five in your example. But I think that number still can get bigger, even though we've reduced the percentage, because it's going to affect everybody in the department. So as far as the numerical number, I don't know how much money we're talking about right now.
Tim, that's the Councilman, Councilman Wood. Tim, could you enlighten, could you do some figuring on it quick?
Uh, yeah.
Tim, I might be able to, can you hear me? I might be able to help you with that.
Yeah, I didn't realize you were on the phone, Greg. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Let me just look at what's in the budget.
Thank you for, thank you for chipping in. I apologize. I didn't realize you were there.
Sorry, Kim.
No worries.
My best guess, while he's looking that up, is probably another twenty thousand. So if we look at, if we take out, uh, non-sworn, I believe adopted budgets, around two point two million for the department. So if you're looking at two hundred thousand, I mean, two million at five percent, that would be a hundred thousand. So instead of the, we were at, if we were at one eighty-four, and that does still calculate all of the benefits, uh, with the increase. If we're looking at a hundred and eighty-four before, that brings us down to, uh, what, ninety? It was going to increase around fifteen, twenty to include everyone.
So, Greg, Greg, are you still figuring?
Yeah, that's, um, that's a reasonable figure, but it's probably on the cost and then they could hit a hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis.
Can you, can you say that again? I'm sorry, didn't, didn't quite hear you, Greg.
Hold on. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, from, uh, from, from just a salary perspective, a hundred thousand dollars is a reasonable cost. And then on to that, you've got to figure additional fika charges, um, potentially, um, additional 401K charges. So, uh, maybe a hundred and seven to a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year is a more reasonable figure and cost.
So Greg, that's lower than the number we had put on the table last week, which I thought was around one seventy-four.
Um, I don't recall the number that was being discussed earlier on simply addressing, um, what it is like.
You're just basically taking all the salaries and increasing by five percent, right, Greg? And then whatever your cost of.
Right.
By, uh, and say four. Okay. So you're pretty confident, you're pretty confident of that number. A hundred and ten thousand, roughly.
I'm, I'm looking at what we have spent year to date and what's likely to be spent between now and year end, and it is close to two million dollars in police salaries.
Greg, does that take into account the local government retirement and the law enforcement retirement number also?
Well, the town contributes, um, five percent, um, toward their 401K. And, um, what is it? It's, it's going to be close to ten percent next year for police. So, no, it's not an exact number, um, but we're, we're just talking about, uh, an additional ten percent on a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, it could, it could potentially be closer to the a hundred and twenty thousand dollar range on an annual basis.
Okay, that's fair enough. I'm worried. I, I'm just looking at this, uh, note in our budget for the comments. It said ten point one five local government retirement, ten point nine local law enforcement retirement, five percent for law enforcement officer and three percent matched for non-law enforcement officers at 401K. So the, the five percent for 401K I get, um, and the so- social security Medicare I get, that's seven and a half percent. But the, the ten point one five and the ten point nine, is that, that's on top of salary also, isn't it?
Uh, mind you, we're paying close to ten percent now and we'd be paying ten percent, uh, even if you didn't consider this additional five. So it's ten percent on any extra, um, and ten percent of an additional hundred thousand, of course, is ten thousand dollars. Um, so it's, it's, in the big picture, um, a hundred and twenty-five K roughly. Um, and that's, that's looking at overall salaries. There are a couple of, uh, non-law enforcement positions within the police department. I don't know off the top of my head what they're making. I don't know what to deduct out. Um, so I, I'm comfortable stating that the cost is going to be reasonably close to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year additional.
Okay. So Mayor, just for clarification, I'd ask the police chief, um, we were talking about a hundred and seventy-four at the fifteen percent at our last meeting and we were encumbering a hundred and ninety-four thousand from the current year's budget. Is that correct, Keith?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So if we go with the five percent, it changes that down from a hundred and seventy-four down to roughly, we're saying, a hundred and twenty. And it's evening out the, the fairness that we've been presented with tonight.
Could you repeat your comment on encumbering money for salaries?
In other words, Greg, there's eighteen percent on page, uh, one fifteen in our budget. It shows that, uh, our, our adopted budget for fiscal year twenty was two million, two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-two and we, uh, were proposing two million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand and our projected was only two million. That's the numbers we were going off of. And, and, uh, Mike Scott responded to that and said that that money was not being spent because we have said in vacancies or whatever during the cycle.
That's, okay.
So that's where that was coming from. That may not be exact because this was based off-
Okay, I, I'm with you. It's, um, I'm with you. Um, I'm defining encumbering money differently, but you're simply saying-
Okay, or carry over or whatever you call it.
We're going to have extra there that will be unspent that can be used for later years. I'm with you.
That was at that. Mayor, I follow the motion number at five percent.
Okay, all right. So, um, we had a, there is a, uh, Councilman Scott made a motion, a five percent increase to all sworn police officers. Um, now we did have, you admitted your motion, so I think Councilman Stevens and made the second on your motion. Councilman Stevens, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So we've got a motion on the floor for a police officer, sworn police officer raises across the board at five percent. And we have a second.
That texted back in.
I had one additional question.
Go ahead, Councilman. Take discussion.
When, when is this to take effect?
Our last motion for the fifteen percent was July first.
So these will come into effect July first and any potential other merit will come into effect in September for the rest of the employees.
Yeah, I'll remove that from the motion. We'll talk about that next, hopefully.
Right, yeah. So the question is, is when do we want this to go into effect?
Mayor, considering that we're carrying this money over, I would say July first.
Okay.
I agree.
Dave Stevens.
If I could just insert, what we traditionally do with any, um, salary changes is that we make it effective the first pay period in the year where, where, where it's a full pay period, um.
Okay, Greg, that's great.
When I say, when I say full pay period, meaning we don't have to go and do proration.
Okay.
So it will become effective, if you would please, um, at the beginning of a full two-week pay period shortly after the new year begins. Some of the, some of the pay, some of the pay during the first year is actually for June. That's traditionally what we have practiced with all merit increases or pay increases.
Councilman Scott, are you okay with that?
Yes, if it's worked for staff, I totally agree.
Thank you.
Um, you want, you make that a part of your motion as well?
Yes, for the clerk. This is Councilman Scott, as Greg stated.
Okay, Councilman Stevens, are you okay with that, that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So now I got a motion and a second with a five percent increase for all sworn police officers. And I'm paraphrasing here for the clerk, uh, beginning at a full two-week pay period after July one.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing, hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye. And if you will, please, um, uh, Madam Clerk, if you'll do a roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilman Dunn?
Uh.
Councilman Lee?
Uh.
Councilman Stevens?
Uh.
Councilman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Barber?
Yes.
Councilman Wood?
Uh.
Councilman Rabel?
Uh.
It's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and, uh, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Chief, and, and Tim and Greg.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, we're going to move on. Um, one other topic, topic that we, that I'm aware that we- Okay, um, we're gonna move on, um, one other topic, topic that we, that I'm aware that we would like to discuss is the actual, um, the, the water plant and discussion regarding water plant expansion.
Mayor, before we go there, can we please...
I'll open that up to the, go ahead, Travis.
Will please revisit that two and a half that we were trying to clarify for all staff to be fair?
Yes, yes, sorry, yes, sir, okay. So the question there becomes, uh, the two and a half percent, um, whether we want that to be across the board, just a two and a half percent, basically a salary adjustment, if you will, for all employees. That means all employees get two and a half percent, um, beginning in September is what we discussed, uh, at a, at a previous budget meeting, or should this now be turned into a merit increase, um, beginning at whatever date the council decides? Um, but it would be strictly a merit increase of two and a half percent, um... Travis, is that basically what you were, your question? If not, I'll, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, Mayor, that's correct, and I, I wanna clarify, we did have a discussion, I was looking through my notes here, and I, I remember Mike's position on that, he was recommending a two and a half across the board because of this pay compression that we were experiencing. And, uh, I did not mean to put the word merit in there because we're looking over the notes, and the other budget, the one that we did not go with, he had two and a half across the board and a three merit. So I think, for clarity, if it's affordable based on his discretion, the two and a half should be across the board to avoid the, uh, the, the, the pay compression that we've had, just like we just discussed with the police department.
Mr. Mayor? Am I still there?
Yes.
All right, I was on mute. I was on mute. Go ahead, Councilman Barber. I was expecting one, Councilman Barber?
Uh, I've had a bad WebEx day today, so I wouldn't be surprised if anything happened. Um, I was gonna say that, um, I think that was the, that was, uh, I was, I agree with Travis, that was the discussion that was had, pretty much, uh, in a long discussion was that, uh, our concern is that we're, we're in the position we were in with the police department and other departments because we did not do certain cost of living raises along the way, whereas other towns do cost of living raises. And so therefore their bottom number kept coming up and ours just stayed the same. And so when we hire people in, they're hired in at the bottom level, which is below the other. That was the, that was the big discussion, and so the, the, the thought was that as long as we maintain whatever the average cost of living raise is, and I'm not necessarily a big fan of cost of living raises either, but to keep the pay structure safe, the, the key is those cost of living raises brings everything up, so therefore that as it goes across the board, everyone, the, the pay structure is maintained. And so instead of us having to come back and do a five, ten, fifteen percent raise to compensate for salaries that are out of whack, we continue to maintain the status quo of what basically everyone is doing across the board to keep our levels up. That, that was my understanding of the discussion. I know that, that's why he is recommending the two and a half percent was simply to keep, keep pace with the, um, with the... I think, I know, uh, I know Councilman, or Pro, uh, Project Mayor, Project Dunn made a good point that, that the cost of living sometimes though is not two and a half percent. You know, really we ought to do whatever the cost of living raise is and implement the cost of living raise, whatever that is. And as it changes year to year, we go with what it changes to and not do these flat numbers, and if we're gonna do cost of living, and then tie everything else into a merit raise. Because I'm definitely in favor of rewarding those who work hard to get something, and just because you happen to be here longer doesn't mean that you deserve any more. It's that because you do more and you earn more and you know more, that's why. So, but I think the, uh, just, to say the, the objective was, that what the manager had said was that the two and a half percent quo was simply to maintain our baseline in comparison to our pay structures as we go forward without having to have major readjustments in the future.
Yep, um, that, that is correct, that's, uh, a fair statement, Councilman Barber. But, yeah, thank you for that clarification. Um, so, so, so basically, that, that says, that sounds to me like that is staying the same. The only question I have, because I'm sure staff is going to ask this, um, and the reason I say that is that I've, I've already been asked. So, so does the, so we just had, we just said, okay, we're gonna give the police officers the five percent. So for clarification, now we're saying two and a half percent beginning in September or at the manager's discretion at timing. Does that two and a half percent, and this is open for discussion, would that then apply to the police department as the sworn police officers as well? So basically, they would get a seven and a half percent raise at some point this budget cycle? Should, should the budget allow it?
This is John Dunn. Uh, if, if the reason we just gave the five percent raise was to get them up to where they needed to be, that is the purpose of the cost of living raise. So my question would be, and I know they have non-administrative, non-law enforcement people in the police force, but for the sworn officers, in theory, that five percent just got them where they needed to be. In theory, I know there's a lot of variation there, but I wouldn't think that they would be eligible for that. Just my two cents, I'm open to hear other ideas.
Okay, any, any further discussion on that or... In this particular case, because I can't see everybody, and so I can't gauge your, your, um, if you're agreeing or not, I, I would, I would ask for a motion, whatever we do here, so, just so that it's clear.
If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion, so I'm gonna hold on a second and see if there is.
What, what's the motion?
The motion would be that the sworn officers are not eligible for the two and a half percent merit, excuse me, two and a half percent cost of living increase when it, when or if it happens.
I personally think that's ripping the bandit off of what we just fixed, but I, I, I'll, I'll stand silent.
That, that makes it then that they got a two and a half percent raise.
No, it makes them they got a five percent then.
No, because if, if everybody else gets a two and a half percent raise and they don't get it, then they got a two and a half percent raise. Because they, they didn't...
Well, they got, they got, they got a two and a half percent salary adjustment to get, to get their salaries back up, yeah. But, but in reality, they're getting a five percent raise. They're maybe up ends plus balance balance.
And the five percent for every officer, not just the patrol officer.
Correct.
I was thinking John's most, David Stevens.
I'm not sure I have, do I, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, I thought I did, but...
Okay.
I make a motion that we, that the two and a half percent, um, cost of living raise does not pertain to sworn officers since they just got a five percent raise to get them to the current cost of living rate.
All right, so I got a motion, I think Councilman Stevens with a second. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mayor, just for clarity, that's, this motion says that all employees would get a two and a half, but not the police officers that, that were just given a raise.
That, that is correct, correct.
Okay.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, all in favor. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you'll do a roll call, please.
Mayor, Project Dunn?
Uh...
Councilman Lee?
No.
Councilman Scott?
No.
Councilman Barber?
No.
Councilman Wood?
Uh...
Councilman Rabel?
Uh...
So it's like year four, three to, four to, four to three, Mayor. Motion passes.
Okay, all right, thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on that. The only reason I voted no was because I feel like it would be fair. I do want other employees to get a raise. Thank you.
Yes, sir, under- understandable. Thank you, thank you, Councilman Scott. Okay, gentlemen, um, I know one other topic we did wanna scut, discuss was the, the water plant and any, any possible expansion there and so forth. I know we've had some, some discussions and, um, with, you know, I, I obviously everything going on, um, with COVID nineteen and so forth, I think we just need some, uh, some discussion on that. And I will turn that over to the council for a discussion.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Travis Scott. I, I first like to say thank you for being able to visit this topic, and, uh, we have, uh, been talking about this for some time, formerly as recent as April of, uh, two thousand nineteen, um, and I think you had the minutes sent to, uh, from the clerk, thank you clerk. Um, the reason, one of the reasons I felt like we should discuss this tonight is, as we've all seen in comparison to the COVID nineteen situation and the current status that we're in, um, the water plant expansion has been proven to us to be a need based on water capacity being sold to bulk customers, and, uh, currently Smithfield is, um, using a very small percentage of the total water that we're producing. I, I just feel like that as a board, you know, we need to be good partners with the county and make sure that we continue our partnership with them and any surplus water we have that we offer to them. But I personally feel like that part of us as being leaders, we need to give clear direction to the staff, um, because I know there's still ongoing discussions about the water plant permitting processes and such as that. And I think in efforts to clarify this, um, and having spoken with, um, council members at different times on this, I think we all share equal concerns, obviously tonight we can make a decision. But I feel that, um, you know, in efforts to help our staff focus their attention on our major problems, I, I would ask that we, we table the water plant discussion, expansion discussion, um, until a later time because of the, of the threat and the risk that we were faced with, with the COVID nineteen, and also the risk of the unconfirmed of the surplus water sales, uh, keeping in mind that it potentially could affect our, our citizens' bills significantly if the water was not sold and the debt fell back on us as a town. So I just wanted us to talk about that.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Mayor, this is, this is Roger, Mayor, um...
Go ahead.
Do we know how long the permits are, uh, valid?
Can, can you repeat that question, Councilman Wood?
Yes, sir, do we know how, how long or what's the expiration date on the permit? How long are they valid?
Oh, okay, um, uh, is Ted, Ted on the line?
Yes, sir, yes, I am, this is Ted.
Did you, did you hear the question, Ted?
Yes, I did, uh, Councilman Wood, they're valid on most permits, I don't know all of them, uh, they're valid until they are rescinded by the state of North Carolina, which means they're permanent. Um, there may be one or two that have sunset dates, but I'll have to check through all the permits. And as an FYI, we did receive our erosion control approval permit yesterday via email, so we'll be getting that in the mail within the next couple of days.
So it's fair to say the majority, if not all, of the permits, and I, unfortunately, I don't know what all you had to apply for, should be good for, forever, basically, until the state says it's time to pull it, right?
The permits that we apply for, yes, sir. There is an overall project approval that does have a sunset date on it, as well as the financing, the letter of intent to fund. So the financing project will, uh, the letter or approval for the financing will also have an expiration.
Have we received that, or have you, are you waiting on that, or is that the next step in the process?
Yeah, that's the next step in the process. Um, we did receive initially, two years ago, an initial letter of intent, and if you recall, you may not have been on that council, but a lot of the others would recall there were certain mileposts we had to meet to keep the project valid. We ran into a delay, we got an extension on these mileposts, and we've been able to meet all of them. But now we're down to essentially, uh, the final, uh, what do you call it? The Department of Water Infrastructure will give final authorization to the Local Government Commission, who will then put the financing, approve that, and will get the financing package probably within the next, uh, thirty to forty-five days. And then it'll be a great time to have all kinds of discussions about everything.
Yeah, I, I would have to agree with Councilman Scott. I know Mike was trying to work, was working with the county, uh, on various items, I suppose. Um, I think we just kinda, kinda hold off until, uh, we can figure out what activity we got going on in the, in the town, if we got any, any growth that's potentially coming that we're not aware of right now. Uh, I, I'm in a, I believe we need the expansion, uh, personally, with the limited knowledge I have. But in the same breath, I need to obtain more knowledge, uh, just coming on board, trying to get acclimated with, with this whole process because I was absent for two years. Uh, I need some clarification myself on certain things, so I think kinda just being patient right now would be a, would be the key, as long as we got a little time. And when the manager comes back, uh, he can continue his discussions with the county and he can get back with us. That would be my recommendation.
Well, I, I can address two, two issues with this. We do have ongoing conversations with the county about them increasing, their desire to increase their minimum purchase, which is a guarantee of revenue, and that's ongoing. Secondly, um, I would really, I can't, because I'm not a council member, I would strongly recommend somebody, or maybe the mayor can do it, I don't know, um, add a closed session Tuesday night, uh, in accordance with General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point eleven, paragraph four. And all that means is that will discuss matters relating to, uh, different projects that may come to town and utility credits, because during that meeting, I cannot disclose publicly what you were just referring to as far as future development, but I certainly can in a closed session. And I'd really like, uh, myself and/or, um, the Planning Director of Winsman to be there so we can explain what is currently going on to assuage the idea that, of growth in Smithfield.
I understand, thank you, Ted, for that. Uh, Mayor, I know we were under some restrictions for closed sessions, has that been lifted in, through this phase two process?
Uh, no, yeah, we, we can certainly meet in closed session, yeah.
Okay, so that is, we can do that now after the phase, after we enter phase two, I guess?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we, we've got an ex, we have an exemption, so that, we're fine.
Well, I would say we'll do more if, if others are in agreement, that would be something we could do at the meeting, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Barber.
So can I, can I make a motion that we table until after a closed-door meeting on Tuesday night? And then we can bring it back up after that if we need to?
Yes, sir, you certainly may. Is that a motion?
I make it, I make it a motion to table till, uh, till further discussion after we get some more information.
Okay, you have a second. Uh, who seconded the motion?
Roger, David.
Mr. Mayor?
I think I heard Roger's name first, Madam Clerk.
Either one, that, that's fine, either way, you got to start.
Okay, so I got a, I got a motion to table this by Councilman Barber and a second by Councilman Wood. Any further discussion? Okay. So, I got a, I got a motion to table this by Councilman Barber and a second by Councilman Wood. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Dunn.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, I dropped my call briefly, but I wasn't off that long. I just had one bit of clarification for something that's in the budget right now. And I know that we have a line item, uh, in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to transfer to Water Store Capital Project Fund. And when originally discussed, that was to be for repairs, upkeep, maintenance to the existing plant, was my understanding. And then at the last meeting we had, it, it was mentioned that it could be used for, um, debt service. At this point, I'd just like it to be clear that that would be for repairs and maintenance of existing, um, facilities.
So, Councilman Dunn, I'm, I'm not sure where you dropped off of the call, but, um, which I, I, I certainly think that's fine. We could always, we can always change it, but Ted had mentioned something about future growth and the possibility of that future growth, which I assume by him saying that may require, uh, an expansion of the water plant. Um, I have no idea.
Right, and if so, we can take this up at the, I, I heard part of that, uh, but if that's the case, then we can discuss that. I'm assuming we can go back into open session after a closed session next Tuesday.
Are you certainly can?
Make that change.
Okay.
But just for now, I just kinda want that to be in the record for repairs, maintenance, and upkeep of the existing facility.
Councilman, Councilman Barber? Okay. Councilman Barber, did you, did you hear that?
Mayor.
And if so, are you okay with that as an amendment to your motion?
I, I think I understood the, uh, the amendment to the motion, but that, that, we, after we discuss it, if we need to, we can bring it back up in an open session. I don't, I have any problem with that.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Travis Scott. Um, I, perhaps I was not clear. I, I thought I had made a motion that we table it before the motion to discuss it later. Um, just for the record, um, you know, with the crisis that we're in, this is, this is dangerous for our town to take on this much obligation, knowing that at risk that the water may not be purchased, um, and knowing that we have capacity fees that we can negotiate. We have permit drawing fees that we negotiate. I just wanna say for the record that I would like for us to vote on that, but if you see it pointless, then I'll, I'll stand, uh, mute.
No, certainly, if you've made that motion, and my apologies, Councilman Scott, so your motion was just to table it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, a motion just to table in, in general to, to a, a future, future date, that's, that's your motion. Is there, is there a second on that? Aye.
Travis?
Yep.
Can you add clarification of that three hundred and fifty to your motion?
Yes, that was my intention, John. That, that would be for current repair upgrades, to manage the problems we currently have. And this is not in efforts to shut down the, the concept. This is in efforts to give clarity to our staff to focus on our current problems. And I do wanna state, Mayor, I have discussed this with, uh, the manager and, um, act, his, his absence is understood, absolutely understood. But he had seek clarity with the county, and they do want to remain partners without any compromise. However, I was informed that, and, um, he, he shared information with me, I'm not sure if other councils received it, but the county did mention interest in buying more water, but again, they didn't commit to it, and it was, it was not a whole lot. Um, they're faced with similar, uh, concerns, but I don't think there's any economic impact that, I don't know. And I do wanna state for the record, um, well, I, I, I'll hush.
Okay. Alright, so, we, we, we had a motion. There was, someone seconded it, but I'm not sure who made the second to that. Did Councilman Rabel?
To which, to which motion are we talking about?
We're talking about, so, okay, so for clarification, so, for clarification, the motion is just to table this and to whatever money is in the budget to be used for repairs and maintenance. Is that correct, Councilman Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That, that, that's the motion. So, the only difference between the two motions that I saw, see, is one that we table it, and the other motion by Councilman Barber is that we would, we would table this until our closed session. So, either way, it doesn't really, we can do the same thing.
Yeah.
So, so let's, let's-
Travis, can you add any closed session to your motion?
Uh, Councilmember Wood, I'm-
I don't think we have to have as part of the motion.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't hear you.
We certainly can make that if you want to, Councilman Scott, but I don't think that we need to.
Mayor, I have reservations about that. Um, the reason I have planned absence, I've, I've discussed with you, um, on the next council session, um, that's out of my control. And I, I just wanted to be part of the discussion. I don't think there's anything in, that's gonna affect the reality here. Um, but I, I'm totally fine if that's what council decides.
So, let's go ahead and vote on this motion, um, to, to delay the, uh, expansion of the water plant with the, uh, the money that's currently in the budget to be utilized for, uh, water, uh, water plant repairs or as needed there. Is that correct, Councilman Scott?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, they, the, the motion was not to delay the building of the water plant. The motion was to table the discussion of the water plant until after, until some other time, the unmained time. So, now, would that result in a delay? Yes, it could, but that is not the motion at hand. The motion at hand was to table this matter until later. So, I just wanna make sure I clarified and tell everybody, we've not voted to delay the expansion of the water top, water plant. We voted to table the discussion. I just wanna make sure.
That, 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 that is, that's correct. And, and if I said, if I misspoke, my apologies, but that is correct.
That's okay. That's the usual word, delay. I just wanna make sure I understand. We're not telling anybody we're delaying anything. We're just tabling it at this point in time because we need more information.
Correct.
Given the, given the current state of affairs. That's the, that's the word, right? Given the current state of affairs, we need to evaluate where we are and what's going on with our partners who we're relying upon to make this all be successful for all of us. Really, that's what we're talking about, right?
That is, that is correct.
And those are all valid discussions that should be done.
So, Madam Clerk, do you understand the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion. Say, uh, aye at, at the roll call. Let's have a roll call by Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, could I ask that she read, read the motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion was made by Councilman Scott, seconded by Council, Councilman Rabel, to table all water plant discussions to a later date. And the funds, the three hundred thousand dollars that is currently budgeted for repairs and maintenance in the water plant be used for that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright. Mayor Protem Dunn?
Uh.
Councilman Lee?
Uh.
Councilman Stevens?
Uh.
Councilman Scott?
Uh.
Councilman Barber?
Uh.
Councilman Wood?
Uh.
Councilman Rabel?
Uh.
You have a unanimous vote, Mayor?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, also, I did have a motion on the floor from, I believe, Councilman Barber and seconded by Councilman Wood. Councilman Barber, would you, you mind rescinding that motion?
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to rescind that motion.
Councilman Wood, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, do I need a, a vote on that, or are we okay with just that?
We are okay with that, sir.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen. No other motions on the floor at this time. Uh, any further discussion on the budget?
Mayor, I, I just would like to add, uh, thank the council for knowing where we're headed and this project. Um, for clarity, in April of two thousand nineteen, we had this discussion, and I felt like it was clear then, um, with the water plant. Um, you know, but this has been continued to go on. Um, I, I just feel like that we need to make sure that the county knows we wanna continue to our partnership with our contracts that we have, and there is definitely room for negotiation there. But we have to make these efforts in the best interest of our community. And with the water sales going out of the county, that would have to be secondary, um, to our, any future growth we may have in Smithfield. But I, I just, uh, I remain concerned about the potential for that large amount of debt that we were faced with, um, with the risk that comes with that. And, uh, that, that's, I just wanna make that clear.
Uh, ve- very good point, Councilman Scott. And I think that was kinda the thinking of the council back in April. Um, if that's kinda where we stood, because at that time, we basically tabled it at that time and agreed to utilize some funds to pay the engineering and then move forward with the clear well. So, I, I, I thought that's where we were, but, uh, yeah, anyway. So, this, I think, should make that, that clear.
I, I would like to ask Ted a question about this.
Yes, sir.
Um, where do we stand with the clear well? Because that did pass in April two thousand nineteen.
Yes, sir, it did. We, we, that's part of the approval package that we're still waiting on. And once that, the plans get final approval, we can go ahead and bid and build that, irregardless of any other decision or how, any other of the project goes. So, we, we just don't have approval for it yet. So, as soon as we get approval, we can, uh, bid and build it. Yes, sir.
And for clarification, that, the motion that was just made does not pertain to the clear well?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I have one other question for, for Mr. Creel. Um, based on today's numbers, what capacity of our water plant, you can get back to us on this if you don't have the data, of water that the total plant makes is being consumed by Smithfield, uh, residents and businesses, non-bulk water sales? Do you have a rough idea?
Uh, so, on, on, it, it seasonally changes, but roughly half goes to bulk water and half goes to the town.
Okay, so, my point with asking that question is, is if we need future water, we can renegotiate that and sell it to town people versus county people, or bulk customers, if, you know, work with them.
There is a portion of the, of the bulk water sale that is, um, guaranteed by contract. We cannot reclaim it. But there is also another portion that we can claw, the phrase is claw back, and we can claw it back and give it to the town. Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I understand that we, we potentially buy capacity back. I think that was in the agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's, that's in there. Yep.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Ted, for clarity.
Ted? Ted, you still on the line?
Yes, sir.
I have one question, not about the water plant. Uh, do you have a question on the fire hydrants? Where are we at with this kind of, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to change the subject, but we've kinda-
No, not at all. I'd be happy to answer that. There, uh, we look back at the list. Uh, there were originally seventeen hydrants on our bag list. Uh, two of them were removed off the list because they were not public water lines. They're private water lines, and we, we can't control them. So, if they, if, if the private water, uh, you know, the owner turns the water off, we have to keep the bag on because we don't wanna make that mistake. Uh, so, they were just pulled off the list, and we notified the fire department of that. Of the fifteen, I believe we've already repaired nine to ten, and we have plans to do the other five, including, uh, next, uh, I believe Tuesday night, we're gonna shut down Marcus Street to get the one at the Chicken Barn. So, the one at Pitchy Street, I know that was a point of contention, Councilman Scott, uh, that one's, that was fixed on Tuesday. So, we are making progress in that direction.
Thank you, Ted. I appreciate that, Dave.
Thank you, Ted. And can I ask, uh, for the council meeting, if you could have a, just a sheet prepared to show us the status?
Of, of the fire hydrants, yes, sir. I sure will.
Yes, sir. Please, sir. Thank you. Any further discussion on the budget, gentlemen? Ted, are you clear as far as the water plant, sir?
I believe I am, yes, sir.
Uh, alright, are you or not?
I, yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, I just wanted to make sure if we, if, that we need a different motion. Um, okay. Alright, gentlemen, uh, there's no further discussion. I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mayor. Mr. Roger?
Thank you, Councilman Wood. I have a motion to adjourn. You have a second?
Second.
So moved.
Uh, was that Councilman Rabel on the second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh.
All opposed? Any opposed?
No.
No. I didn't think so. Madam Clerk, that's why I did not do a roll call. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night, gentlemen. Have a good weekend.
Good night, gentlemen.
Have a good one. And we'll, we'll see some of you, uh, Tuesday night.